Oh, she's busy yet. That's all right. We'll wait for a minute. Okay, we're gonna have you call the roll call, Joy.
Sure. Snowy?
Here.
Van Kampen?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Mar?
Here.
Moza?
Here.
Holda?
Here.
Beno?
Here.
And Smith Beck and Majaskir out tonight.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Next item, approval in minutes of March seventh, two thousand twenty-four. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Uh, moving on to public appearances with first item is if there's anybody in the audience that wants to discuss anything on or off the agenda. We'll allow three minutes for each person. Is there any, did you have some notes from anybody? Nothing?
No.
I don't think anybody does. We're gonna move on. First item on the, oh, I shouldn't say first, then the next item is. There's no unfinished business. Item seven, eight, uh, public hearing to discuss the considered recommendation of village board for a revised general development plan for the village, the villa's development in Highlands of Netherwood. Applicant is Forward Development Group. I'll open the hearing at this time. Staff report.
Alright, so I'll give a quick overview and then we have Dave Jenkins here from FPG to share a little bit more, but um, this is a plan we reviewed back in two thousand twenty-one. Uh, the villas kind of condo style, um, there's a condo plat here. Um, the original plan was that these units were gonna be all detached and you can see there's a couple that have been built. Um, this is just right off Peterson Trail on the left side of the road as you're coming in. Um, so I believe these four units have been built and I believe this corner one is now under construction. Um, but just given market conditions, kind of the size of the units, um, construction costs, um, applicant came forward and just wanted to make some revisions to uh, the the arrangement, kind of a little of the uh, units, not the lots themselves. So, um, really the change here is that there's a couple of twin homes uh, right along here that are still on the original lot lines, but now zero lot lines duplexes. I believe the plan is that these would still be um, all owner occupied and you know, all subject to the, the HOA documents that are already in place over there. But there's also some changes to some grading to some of these other detached units that were gonna be just zero entry, but now um, again, due to some construction costs and some um, grading changes would just have a step up. Um, but I think largely is with the change to these twin homes, um, try to add an extra bedroom. These have a walkout basement, so um, a three-bedroom home, a little bit more appealing to kind of your average buyer and hopefully get these moving and filled up a little faster than the first couple have gone. So, um, Dave, you wanna come up and maybe share anything I left out or um, just be available for questions? That'd be great.
Hi, I'm Dave Jenkins, uh, owner of Forward Development Group. Um, most of the uh, uh, market has uh, has really uh, has been looking for a three-bedroom product with a basement, uh, that uh, and this plan was a two-bedroom, two-bath, two-car garage, but we found that uh, the price point was over four hundred thousand dollars per unit. And we looked at ways, in fact, when we, we, we broke ground on lots one through four, I think we did that in the fall of twenty-two. Um, I'm sorry, it would have been the, yes, in twenty-two, and then when the interest rates started going up in June of or that year, uh, and when those came online, we, we stalled out. We just got an offer on number two, had uh, that has uh, um, has just uh, got an offer from somebody from coming from New York um, looking to, to relocate here, uh, and we were able to sell that, uh, but it took us two years. Um, the, it's hard to compete with Lennar's pricing. They've been rating down a lot of their mortgage, uh, interest rates about two hundred basis points. So that helps that market and also the uh, uh, they were rating down fifty to s- to a hundred thousand dollars per home just to move them. Uh, they're a publicly held company. It's hard to compete, right? So, a lot of the, the interest in here, uh, uh, we went to other builders to see if we could find any other interest in, in uh, helping finding the market here. And what we found is that uh, they like them, but they want three-bedroom. They're not deep enough uh, uh, on most uh, uh, of the lots, uh, at least the, the, the two fingers that uh, would go north. Uh, so the depth is a challenge, right? So to add, then you're only adding more cost. So where we looked at saving cost was a duplex. Uh, there's still, it, there, there's no change to the plat. Each unit is on each unit of land. And nothing would change on the plat. It would just that the, the zero lot line would be required uh, for us to, to, I think that would be the only change on the, on the amended GDP here. What I would ask that uh, you guys consider is, is uh, is allowing us to build these. I, I think that uh, there, there's been a lot of interest in, in uh, owner occupied duplex where they would like another family member. We do have the ability, if it's owner occupied, to allow them to to rent out the other side to a family member. Um, and that was in the original uh, declarations of our condominium docs. So it were very consistent to what we had proposed here. Again, we're not changing the plat, but asking that the eight individual units have a duplex or a half a duplex within that each of those lots with a zero on uh, four locations, a zero lot line request. Uh, as far as, uh, there was some comments from lot twenty-seven that sold to another builder. Altera, uh, has a client that responded uh, to the village on the uh, on our request here. And I think we were able to answer that through legal and I did provide that to the village, but it, there's again, no change uh, to the where he was concerned where their, would their boats be parked on. Usually when you have duplexes, there's more cars. Um, but each have a two-car garage, each unit, and each unit has two parking stalls um, in their driveway. And the other was the uh, uh, consideration of condo costs and would they charge more because of there's gonna be more uh, cost to the common area and we're really not changing the uh, the common element at all. Uh, the only common, in common here would be mowing and, and snow removal. And if you have any other questions, I could certainly answer them for you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody from the public have any con- questions or comments about the hearing? Plan Commission, you got any questions? How do you feel about it?
The only question I've got, Dave, is um, the buildings themselves, uh, themselves have the materials been changed or the aesthetic been simplified or anything? I understand that, you know, you're going to duplex town.
I can go through that for you, John, here real quick. Um, is, is, Lee, can you pull up the uh, yeah, the, so what we looked at is, is a different product type uh, upfront. Just the, the cost of doing brook or stone. Uh, we were able to do hardy board upfront. I think that's more uh, desirable for the consumer today. And uh, so it's a higher-end product. It's not vinyl upfront. Uh, we have the cedar shakes in the, in the front as well. Um, we also uh, got rid of the zero entry and uh, uh, raised the first floor up out of the ground a little bit to allow us to, uh, we do still have the option and we're proposing if there was a senior uh, buyer, uh, or somebody that would like a zero barrier, uh, we still have, we kept that option in the plan set to allow us to do that. We're just trying to build more flexibility. If they want brick, they could choose to have that, but it only adds cost. We still have the enclosed porch as an option going forward and that doesn't change. But what we did on the duplexes is create, we, we added ten feet in width to each unit and we added an extra bedroom. So it's a three-bedroom, actually it's a four-bedroom and three and a half bath if we build the basement out. And the affordability comes into play because there's, there's more uh, livable space on the first floor. A young family then could uh, realistically uh, live uh, and, and really occupy that first floor without uh, really building the, the lower level. But uh, but you're right, John, we did look at uh, some of the exterior. But uh, we thought with the hardy board and the, the, the different materials that we're proposing. JSD had done that, uh, Justin had prepared that. I think it's in the um, what we're proposing in the submittal. We also have the different plans. Some of these are mirrored and some are not. Some have a horizontal shift on the duplexes. Uh, you'll see that one sixteen feet uh, shifted horizontally with a two-foot vertical. Uh, the other one's a sixteen-foot shift with a one and a half foot vertical. And then there's one that are common in line. Uh, and then the last one to the west is a I think it's a fourteen-foot shift with a uh, one and a half foot vertical cha- or one foot, actually a half a foot uh, vertical change. So they're all a little different. We added length and width to the duplexes. So uh, would provide that three-bedroom, uh, where we had more depth in those lots. I think that's more marketable for us and that's what the buying customers looking for is a three-bedroom and we just weren't able to do that with the two. Now, we did get a contract on lot eighteen, which uh, was uh, um, after two years of marketing, uh, we found uh, another buyer, so it was a contract. So um, we have six, would be sixteen left without the, the four duplexes.
I understand that the price point is sort of the key feature that you're trying to hit by redo- changing some of the materials. I do think that um, it would be nice for some of the details to be brought back in though. And what I mean by that specifically is like at the entries, you've got a four-by-four post. It'd be nice to just do a simple base and capital on it just so that it doesn't look like a stick out at the corner.
I agree. I think this one here does have the, it, it's not brick.
It's more the individual units, I think, is what I'm talking about.
Oh, okay, the individual ones, okay.
Yeah, the individual units looks like um, a lot of the materials were taken off except for the sheik um, in the gable end.
We can add those back in, John.
Yeah. Uh, and I'd also um, like to see that I think when this pro- project came back uh, last time, um, it was agreed that there would be no two units that had the same color or palette, like at least three in a row or four in a row or the rule of seven. Uh, for some reason that rings a bell. Maybe that was.
Yeah, and we're, we.
Was that Veridian?
Mm-hmm.
Alright.
We're proposing to do that as well and each duplex will have different color.
Okay.
Uh, so it really looks like a separate, but what we did um, on the entry is really try to make sure the curb appeal would be in uh, maintained. That's why shifting those, otherwise you'd have really long driveways. But we can add that to the single ones, the veneer, uh, I think it's veneer, it's, it's, I'm not the builder, but I, I know that uh, it's, it's, it's a brick ledge, but it's, it's not an actual brick. It's a, it's a, a stone product like a veneer stone.
Yep, perfect. Thank you.
Can you clarify how you would accommodate the zero entry option if somebody wants it? Would you, was it a ramp or is it lowering the foundation?
No, what we could, we would do is we have the original grading plan that uh, that had been proposed. In the each drawing, uh, we put in uh, so Justin made it very cl- or, or would like to, 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 to have that written in the approval to allow us to, to have multiple options. So if somebody did want a zero entry, we won't have to come back, uh, cause they would go back, revert back to the original grading plan. Um, and then we, the engineer, as well as the builder maintains the drainage on all buildings and we actually hired the engineer's surveyor to lay these out to maintain that continuity. So, we would just uh, during the permitting process, we would give you a plot plan that would show that either it's a zero or, or a fourteen. Uh, I think it's a fourteen-inch change uh, in vertical from the garage floor to the first floor. I think it said, John, you would know better than I would. I think it's like, it's usually a fourteen-foot li- lift, right? Or the, they vary. Uh, I think the plan, ours showed uh, uh, the fourteen inches from the garage floor to the first floor.
Oh, yeah, that sounds right.
Yeah, it's, it's, you see, it's two steps, risers, seven-inch risers. So this does have the stone, uh, and then we would uh, again, assure you that we would have different colors for each side of the duplex. So they, it still would have uh, look like they're, they have their own identity.
I guess one question on the grading plan. So if you're kind of planning on taking each lot as it comes, or is there sort of, cause there's one grading plan that imagines the steps and then one grading plan that imagines zero entry, so I mean, again, I'm not an engineer too, but would there be enough variation that the, the water would still flow and work as designed?
It, it would. It, we would still have um, uh, just to match the, the foundation, the, the and, and two, they're all, most all these are, are um, what we call book out. It's a three-nine wall and it's got wood above that. So if it's lower, uh, we still hold the driveway pitch at the, at the less than four percent. That sets the garage floor. And then if it's down, then we, the house is actually in the ground a little more. So we would just bring the, the three-nine up uh, more uh, to make that happen. But a- again, I think what we wanna do is keep the affordability here. We don't want to propose a zero entry cause it does alleviate about fifteen hundred dollars in foundation cost. So, again, our price point is trying to get below four. Um, here, and if we can get that, we just sold the one for three ninety-nine. I think our pricing with basement on lot eighteen, which is under construction now, our price point under contract with the finished basement and the porch was four fifty-five. So, uh, but it's only two-bedroom. Uh, duplexes have three-bedrooms, so we uh, we accounted for a little bit more width, a foyer and three-bedroom on the main level. So it's gonna be a little bit more spacious, uh, even though, cause you have more room to, to play with because you only have one side yard on, on those lots. So, I guess with that, I think if there's any, what to, to answer, at least your question, I think what we would propose then to do is if we diverted from a zero entry to a step up, which we're proposing today and all the single, uh, we would come back to you and get that approved.
Okay.
So, we wanna keep costs down.
Yeah, and that's the thing I can, I can talk about with Jeff and Brian, our consulting engineer too, just to see if you know, as the things are built out too, if there's adjustments just in the grading plan that are pretty minor determine if that's something to bring back to planning commission or just staff review.
Yeah, and what we can do is uh, we can let the, the, the uh, broker know that it would require uh, a certain step to get uh, reverted back to a zero
Okay.
entry. So, we'll work with you and staff on that.
Okay. Anybody else? Plan Commission, any questions? No issues with this? Uh, okay, we're gonna close the hearing. Move on to discussion then for possible recommendation to village board.
I'll make a motion to approve the um, revised general development plan for the villa's development in the Highlands of Netherwood. Contingent upon the addition of some additional architectural features to be approved by staff. Um, and the flexibilities with zero, zero entry if, if requested.
And I think too, we will have the SIP revision
Right.
after this too, so we can make sure that the um, the architectural comments are in that as well.
That's a motion that is acceptable. Sounds good. So we have, need a second for that motion.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move on then to review and possible approval of the revised SIP plan for the villa's development.
Make a motion to approve uh, the SIP for the villa's development at the Highlands, uh, with the same requirements and constraints.
We motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, Mr. Mar. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, move on to item seven B, review and possible, oops, seven C, excuse me. For discussion only, this is review of conceptual plan for feasibility of a multi-family development fifty-four, fifty-two fourteen Coney Highway CC. Applicant is All-Star Properties.
Alright, I'll give a little overview here and then uh, have Keo come up and
Okay.
um, give a little bit more background, but this is uh, property that's between Mulligan's and the Methodist Church. Barely wooded lot, probably seen the for sale sign out there over the last couple of months. I think it might be down now. Um, owned currently by uh, Mr. Thatcher. So, um, this is a town of Oregon property. This is one of our missing teeth of the village limits out here on CC. Um, so along with the Up and Think properties that have now been purchased by Regency, kind of kitty corner from here. Um, this property would be kind of the last on Jefferson Street, um, to be annexed and then kind of round out our boundary out here. So, um, All-Star has this property under contract. Um, Mr. Thatcher has submitted or is in the process of uh, filing an annexation petition and sending that to the state. Um, some of the materials have already been sent to Village Hall, but has not been officially submitted to the state yet. So that follows rolling, um, a lot of similar kind of considerations here too, just as we were looking at the Regency project over the last couple of months too with um, possible planned multi-use trail and kind of a loss of a little bit of land out along CC for future right-of-way. Um, they're looking here at a, a multi-family development with a mix of a multi-family apartment building with underground parking on kind of one and a half levels and then six townhomes backing up to the kind of townhomes and duplexes that are um, there on Oregon Parks Avenue. So, um, we can scroll to the plan and Keo, maybe if you wanna come up just to, um, anything else or just be here for questions, but um, we do have this rendering that they've submitted. Uh, I can hear, you can see, this is a, a very long, narrow uphill site. It's just about two-point-four acres. Um, so lower as you get to the road, so they've tried to kind of use the topography here to their advantage and have um, two different levels of this underground parking, uh, be able to just enter right there. So, the majority of the parking need for that apartment building would be within the, within the structure. Um, bit of a site plan here and then um, just some initial thoughts on the floor plan and then the, the townhomes as well. So, obviously just at a concept stage here, um, I guess I'll let you add anything and then just ask for feedback from the planning commission.
Yeah, thanks, Keo, with uh, with All-Star Properties. Um, so we're really just at the conceptual stage. Uh, as Lee said, this is under contract and all really looking for uh, tonight, I know there's no action on this, but is just to get an idea of how you feel about the approximate layout and bulk. We don't have the details of landscaping and so forth, but the upshot is we have this transition from the duplexes to the north, to the townhomes, and then as you go south to the bigger apartment building on CC. So, I don't remember the exact number of units that we have showing so far, but it's in the mid-fifties or something like that. Uh, three-bedroom townhomes in the back, uh, two-bedroom and one-bedroom in the apartment building. Um, materials and again, just conceptually speaking, materials and architecture. Uh, townhomes in the back will be not dissimilar to the townhomes that we have off of North Alpine. That sort of horseshoe shape that we finished a few years back. Of uh, although those are three-story and these are just two-story. And then a apartment building, um, style and materials more suited to that sort of larger building. Um, this for, uh, you know, if I'm looking at the materials that the architect has proposed, similar to what North Point is proposing on our former lots, uh, fifty-eight and fifty-nine, which would be uh, I don't know how to describe that, just to the, yeah, to, to the northwest, yeah. Um, and we would, yeah, similar colors, similar materials, that sort of thing. Um, so that's really what we're talking about. We don't have details as to how, exactly how big the pond would need to be. Um, but the general principle, apartment building with, you know, forty-some units, underground parking. Townhomes in the back with two-car garages. And everything accommodating that gradual slope that the lot has down to CC.
I don't see anybody jumping up and down and disagreeing with what you're suggesting, so I, I, I don't really have a problem. We're gonna have some other multi-family in the area, obviously, so it, it makes sense.
Essentially just a, a smaller scaled-down version of what North Point's doing, just right to the, you know, just adjacent right here to the west. That's a three-story building, then two-story townhomes. So that'll, the townhomes will actually be adjacent to the site, not the multi-family, but yeah, their townhomes are here and here with that multi-family kind of this corner.
Can you talk about the unit breakdown? I heard you say forty-some units. I see in the, in the written description, fifty-one units.
Sorry, I meant forty-some units in the apartment building and then six units of uh, of uh, townhomes in the back.
That's not what the description says.
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one and six.
Oh, I'm sorry, fifty-one and six. Apology, sorry. It's gone back and forth as far as the exact size. So, let's go with that. Let's go with whatever written down. So six in the back, fifty-one in the uh, in the apartment building.
What I'm asking is single-bedroom apartments, multiple-bedroom, what's the breakdown in the apartment building?
The apartment building is, I don't know the exact numbers and they're still fluctuating a little bit. The apartment building is primarily two-bedroom with a few one-bedroom and, you know, s- minority one-bedroom and studio. The uh, townhomes in the back are all three-bedroom.
Reason I'm asking is I'm seeing eighty-three stalls, fifty-one units, and not a lot of exterior parking. So, is that enough? If, if every unit had two cars, it wouldn't be enough.
I think we're at, off the top of my head, I think we're at one-point-seven, one-point-eight stalls.
That meet our code? That meet our code?
Yeah, we reduced it a couple of years ago to one point five.
Okay.
Um, spaces per unit regardless of bedroom side, size, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, so we're, we're above the minimum, the emphasis was on two-car garages for the townhomes. I think what it boils down to is, uh, those two-bedroom and one-bedroom. How big of a family are we really talking about being in the apartment building? Because we're anticipating those as not being particularly large family units. We think the parking is probably sufficient, um, and, uh. So I think that's where we're, that's where we're at on it, it's fair enough, if, if you had larger families. Again, relative to the size of someone who would rent a two-bedroom or one-bedroom squeezing in there, um. It would be an issue, I don't anticipate that that's what we're looking at, I think we've got, um. Uh, we have a multi-family, uh, apartment building style with forty-eight units in, uh. A town of Westport. And I think we're about the same, um, we've got about the same parking there, it's another stru- uh, different design, but underground parking predominantly. With, uh, uh, exterior parking, because it's a mixed-use building, exterior parking is kind of restricted to the mixed-use. We end up with extra parking stalls there that people rent for. You know, random reasons and storage and things like that, so I think we're okay, but, you know, we're open to it.
This, as far as your concept, I, I don't have a problem, the location seems to make sense, just a couple of reactions to your model. Uh, the difference between the townhomes and the apartments, it's an awkward transition. I'd like to see the architecture, you know, meld as one consistent style, so, uh, that's something to think about. I think the critical elevation on this is gonna be the east elevation, which is not shown here. Um, so I would be looking at breaking up those masses, uh, because that's a, it's a long building. Uh, and it's gonna be quite apparent, uh, as you're traveling west, looking at that facade. Um, my initial reaction was the, with the roof is a tremendous opportunity for potentially a green roof. Or some use on the, of that roof, so, uh, think about that a- as you're going through.
Yeah, and that was something I talked about with the architect about redesigning some of. So there's a small, it shows a small patio right now that I think has access to only one unit. Increasing that, making it accessible to a couple of units on top, that sort of thing, um. As far as, uh, uh, continuity of architecture, so would I hear you saying? And I'd be curious if the, again, we're at the conceptual stage, so we could talk about this with more detailed architectural layouts and renderings, but. Um, what I hear you saying is you wouldn't be averse to a more, um. I don't know how to describe it, I'm not an architect, but a more sort of modern-looking, uh, flat roof look, for example. On the, uh, uh, townhomes in the back. As opposed to making the front apartment building look more residential style with peaked roofs and things like that.
Right, I think that the hip roof transition to a flat roof seems really weird. Um, now, you also have to take into context what it's abutting, right? Uh, so to the north there, that transition, but, um, I'd be more favorable for a flat roof for both.
Okay.
Uh, or a single-sloped roof on the back, uh, as opposed to the hip roof.
Mm-hmm, okay, fair enough.
Kio, when I looked at this, um, it, it, it was pretty clear to me that it, it was driven by a couple of things. One is the fire department turnaround, which is what gave you that T at the very end, which is why you had to do that with the townhomes. And then the apartment was driven by the underground parking and the efficiencies and the pre-cast and the blah, blah, blah stuff. But it, it turns kind of rudimentary after that, you know, it's, it's just, um. It's too simplistic, I think that what, what, what I'm struggling with is that it works, it's efficient. But it's also a little on the brutal side, um, I think to Patrick's point, you've got a building that's longer than a football field. And I think that it needs to have either a jog or a kink or a, uh, something in it. To add some visual interest to it, to break up the mass. Um, I think that when it comes back through, you know, you step the building, but that doesn't mean that you're not gonna have or need changes in the parapet. Um, I think that you also need to help, uh, create something that's a more formal entry for materials or image-wise. Um, I think the parking on the opposite side of the building's a little funky. Um, if I, if I'm a guest and I wanna visit the apartment, I would want to pull into a parking stall that's facing the apartment. Not on the opposite side, um, so, um. Uh, I think that the, um, one thing that also may help you is that. The, uh, uh, townhomes that are along the backside. You, there is the potential, according to your site plan, to maybe jog them a little bit as you go to the east. Um, 'cause there's more of a, a backyard on the units on the right than the ones on the left, for instance.
Stagger them a little bit.
Yeah, to, just so that I'm not driving into my neighbor's garage kind of thing. Um, uh, so you could add a little bit of interest that way, I'm at the third jog, you know, that kind of thing, um. That might give you the flexibility then to do something with that long rectangular building to either. Break it up into two masses so that you can have a little bit of a span in the middle to do something with, um, uh, um. Exercise rooms, community rooms and entry feature elevator core, um, break up the massing, that kind of thing. Um, and then, uh, it would be nice if you could somehow break up the stormwater into two ponds even. And, uh, gravity tells you that it all needs to be on that side, I get it. But there's no reason why that's, uh, just to the bottom left of where your hand is, up from there, the green portion, right in between the drive and the building. Yes, right there, you know, you could even break that mass of that pond up and put some of it there as it trickles down the site itself. Um, and just sort of tier it, um, just things to think about as you go through this. Um, I, I agree, I don't think that it's a bad project, I think that you've done the right things with the shape of the lot. Um, I just think that it's a little rudimentary and, and needs a little bit of work.
That's where we're here for the conceptual stage, whereas opposed to bringing a finished plan.
You're not seeing the opposition at this point.
Oh, okay.
Uh, John's comment about moving the parking, I actually like the guest parking where it's at, it leaves more green space in front of the building.
True.
You will need to consider some common elements, some grilling space or a little pavilion or stuff out there. So I like having the green space in front of the building where people wouldn't have to walk across the driveway to, to go to the, you know, usable green space.
Yeah, I like the, uh, general approach that we, we have here with, uh, that's good, a good. A good unit for that space there and it blends in well with the, with the, uh, community around it. The church on the east side and everything blends, I think, tiers in well. And, uh, all the suggestions that have been made tonight, I think, are, are good ones.
Alright.
Thanks very much.
Okay, see you again.
Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, item four D, this is for discussion only, updates on ongoing zoning text amendments.
Alright, well, I was expecting Sonia here, so I'm guessing she's still on her way, didn't know how long it would take to get through these other items, but.
Well, there's something else we can do.
Yep, no, I can get, get us started and, and she can jump in here when she gets, um, settled, so, um. There were a couple of comments last time, uh, mostly from Patrick, thank you, on a couple of details. And we, we cleaned up a couple of other items, so, um, the revisions were, um, incorporated. I think a lot of chicken and bee things and a couple wording items on fencing, so, um, the updated drafts are, are in here. Um, and we can certainly discuss any of those other items, um, if you have any questions. But I think what we wanted to spend the majority of the time on, and I know she has a, a, a presentation she was planning on bringing too, but. Um, this gateway corridor overlay, um, and she sent out a memo to, uh, yesterday. Which Joy sent all of you, we'll, we'll pull up, um, but did it include a map of all of the parcels? That are along kind of our, our main corridors, uh, Jefferson, Jamesville and North Main Street, so I'll see if I can scroll to that. So everything that's highlighted there in that kind of purple boundary, um, that dotted line there. Um, are all the parcels that again, face those properties, um, or, or roads, sorry. Um, so, among many things that we wanted to discuss with you, again, if this sort of, what's the intent of this overlay district? Is it to have, um, you know, higher quality building materials, is it to have higher landscaping standards? Is it to require all parking and new, um, developments to be behind new, behind buildings? Rather than kind of the suburban style of parking lot out front and height and, um, and the building behind, so. Actually, Sonia, if you wanna come sit next to me, we can, we can just get the H D M I connected up here, so, um. Just getting them oriented a little bit to, to your map, so, um. One thing that Sonia brought up too, and we'll go through is, you know, do we wanna have every project, um, on any part of these parcels? Subject to these design overlay guidelines, or is it the front fifty feet or a hundred feet or something like that? Some of these parcels are quite deep, um, so largely the focus of our conversation, I think, is about what's the intent of this. Um, this overlay district, what are we trying to achieve and then? Then crafting the language to actually, um, achieve those goals, so I can toggle over to, to the memo. And I know you did a little bit of work to kind of, um, look at what other communities have to, if any, language, um. To kind of, again, codify this and get some of the goals that we have, so.
Sounds good.
We did, yeah, I don't know if there was any other, of the Z T A ones that we've been kind of going through. You guys had any further questions or comments and any other language changes? Um. If not, we'll, we'll just kind of focus on this one.
Alright.
Yeah, they did get your memo yesterday, um, I have it pulled up, but if you wanna pull it up too, we can kinda jump back and forth.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone, um, sounds like Elise gave a little bit of an introduction to, um. The potential purpose of and location of an overlay design district. Um, this PowerPoint's loading up at about sixty percent now, so it should be open in a second. Um, but I just put together a few slides to talk through what your goals are specifically with the overlay district. So that as we move forward, not making any assumptions about, um, what your goals are specifically. For the corridors that are mentioned in this language, um, and to make sure that we are prioritizing. The design objectives that you might want to achieve, and as Elise mentioned, part of that discussion is just sharing a few examples. Of what other communities have, uh, to give an idea of the variety of options there are. So just in terms of your current design standards, you do have overlays for the downtown district. Those are very specific, kind of promote a historic architectural character. And you have a section for the neighborhood district as well, um, other than that, the design standards are fairly light. In the code today, you have some, uh, regulations for exterior construction materials, of course, the exposed fasteners being one of them. Um, but they're, they're pretty vague, and I took a couple of, um, excerpts from the language here in the slides. You can see high-quality decorative and those are to be located on the visible exterior and shall be compatible with. Surrounding area and community standards, so not a whole lot of specifics in there that a developer or a property owner, um, would know exactly what they're needing to work with. Uh, beyond that, there are other elements of the zoning code that impact site design and the way that things are laid out. So you have landscaping requirements, those count as a design guideline, you have pavement setbacks, you have assigned ordinance. And then within the group and large development section of the code, there are a lot of other standards that serve as design type, oriented type regulations. But those only apply to specific group and large developments. Um, a lot of common community objectives, uh, that places will kind of have a consensus around when pursuing design guidelines are those listed here. You know, the co- sense of character, sense of place, not wanting to be anywhere USA when you arrive in the community. Um, kind of having that welcoming front door experience that you're in someplace special that you recognize that it's Oregon. Um, avoiding un- unadorned, you know, box commercial, uh, improving pedestrian environment, bicycle accessibility. Economic development and quality redevelopment to support a market that then drives more kind of good projects that you want to see. Um, and natural resources too, in terms of kind of infill and redevelopment instead of, um, strip commercial development. At suburban edges and that sort of thing, so, um, these are some common goals that maybe you've thought about, um. And you might have more to these that, um, hopefully, we can hear about tonight to know why and where we wanna go, um, with the regulations. So in the memo, I put together a few just ideas, uh, ways to kind of frame how we could approach these. And one that was presented before is, don't use a design overlay and instead use your base zoning and you could beef those up. Um, or if you're interested in, which sounds like is the case, um, applying a higher standard to certain areas in the community. You would use that overlay and that's where two, three and four come in. Number two is really prescriptive, specific standards in the code, so this is quantitative measurable things. It's predictable and it's really fair, um, so again, like I said, someone can come in and say, I have to have forty percent be masonry. Or, you know, so many amount of my percentage is glazed, um, in windows, things like that. Or, um, you can have a little bit more flexibility and kind of describe best manage- management practices and have design guidelines. And provide examples, and then people can have things to choose from, um, and then number four, maybe you have a blend, maybe, and. Um, I kinda go through this a little bit more in some other slides, but maybe you focus on a key set of design standards. And then you have guidelines and flexibility in additional standards. I outlined some of the pros and cons here of each, again, prescriptive, the detailed, easy-to-understand transparency, can be uniform across things. Uh, but you could have concerns about a lack of flexibility or in this environment, development affordability, adding additional, uh, requirements. That are very, very specific and rigid, um, the guidelines could be a little bit more flexible, but it can result in inconsistent a- application. And, you know, is often subject to negotiation, that leaves staff in a difficult place a lot of the time. Um, usually, a guidelines-type framework is often supported through an incentive to encourage it to be used. So, uh, a facade improvement program or something like T I F. What I'm familiar with, Manona Drive Urban Design Guidelines, uh, is supported through a facade improvement program funded by T I F. Um, on the lower right of this screen, it's an aerial image across from the golf course on Manona Drive. And there's that L-shaped building, that was influenced by the Manona Drive Urban Design Guidelines. When redevelopment comes in, the building moves up and you can see the buildings adjacent to it, um, are not that style and form. So you're left in this sort of limbo period as the guidelines are applied over time. Uh, complete family dentistry, McDonald's, the old office buildings, um, the image on the top, you can see the parking lot there in front. Will continue to, um, have a little bit of a different feel. The image, the image with the text on there is just to show things like, you know, easily identifiable, viable building, and the, the language is vague. Um, it's, it's those guidelines, things like, things are discouraged or encouraged, things like that. Um, every planner, I think, has their favorite gas station, and if you were looking at these images, you, which one is the gas station? Like, they've kind of designed it so well, um, it's in downtown Delafield here, the mobile sign, um, the image on the lower part. Uh, in the middle, um, so you can see that is very, very specifically designed to, um, this style of architecture with wood. Um, shingles on the roof and the canopy for the gas station in the back, um, other development here, all built, you know. Nineteen ninety-five and later, but difficult to tell because the standards were so specific, uh, to what they wanted to achieve. I called this a prescriptive example, but it's really a blend, um, one of the prescriptive standards is in the text on the bottom. It says, the, uh, windows and display areas shall have at least forty percent of the first, so that's a specific number. Um, but then they do blend in some more, uh, general language, which is the example down below, compatible with other buildings on the same block. Fitchburg, um, this is an example of. Fitchburg, um, this is an example of the most prescriptive code that I'm aware of and that I've worked with. Um, this is in the smart code area and you can see the buildings take a certain form in relation to the street. In this particular code, one of the keys that they use is lot frontage buildout, which not only brings the building up to the street, but has a certain percentage of the lot required to be built out. So if your lot is 100 feet wide and you have an 80% frontage buildout, your building must cover 80 feet of that lot. So there are a lot of different ways to bring forward specific standards. This is very, very prescriptive. I'll just add, it's so prescriptive, in fact, that development in the smart code does not require plan commission approval because the code tells you exactly what to do. Uh, so none of it is open to negotiation or sort of inputs. It's explained exactly in the code. Couple of Van De Welle specific examples, Muncie, Indiana. I brought this up just to show, um, a lot of the text that you could use. Uh, could be summarized on a graphic, uh, like on the left and then supported with text like on the right. Middleton, Pheasant Branch, uh, neighborhood guidelines, things like roof form. Here they're saying a preferred roof form is gabled. Uh, they would not allow a mansard or an A-frame, but they may consider a gambrel hip or a flat roof. So again, not wanting to make this too complicated, but just wanting to be clear about what things are important on these corridors that you want to pursue. And I pulled out, um, these as being the most common, um, design standards that sort of set the stage of what a site ends up looking like. Uh, one there, you want to have a purpose and intent statement that clarifies what you're going for. Two, site design, and another word for this to me is building placement. So you're going to have the building up to the front if that's desired and vehicle circulation areas in the back. Casey's gas station on the east side is another example with the canopy in the back. Maximum setbacks instead of just using minimums for a building, specific building materials and specific building height. I would say the second tier of standards where you could maybe be a little bit more general or pick and choose. Things like landscaping, window glazing, how you treat trash enclosures. Do you have a specific lighting standard or style? On Manona Drive, it was the Shepherd's Hook light fixtures that they tried to encourage so that it interacted with the street and the private development. Um, signage, you know, where is the door located? Um, what does the building feel like as you access it from the pedestrian walkway? Roof form and then character and theme. I don't know, I don't, again, not wanting to make any assumptions, but I don't know that that's on the table so far for discussion in terms of a specific character and theme. But a lot of places use their design guidelines to achieve that. So on the image here is Bear Boo, um, with the Ringling Circus and historic mill and circus era architecture. So things that sort of promoted that. So a lot of places go in that direction. And then applicability, Elise was talking about this a little bit, you know, do we not want it to apply to any single family into family development? Are you interested in mapping all of the corridors that are in this text so far? We're changing that. And then we could map the entire parcel, any parcel that has frontage on the corridor, but apply the standards only to the first 50 feet or something like that, or facades that face the street. For at least the building materials, things like that. Overview there, uh, just to jog some thoughts and, and make sure that we're, we're on the same page for what we want to achieve.
You want to pull up your memo that you sent yesterday too, and maybe just scroll down to like the discussion questions. We can kind of use that as a jumping off point. Alright, what are you guys thinking? You know, I think we kind of mentioned this. We touched on this really high level before, just that you guys were interested in, in fleshing this out a little bit more. But, you know, Sonya was kind of asking me in preparing this, you know, what do you think? The intent or the goals the planning commission has of beefing up and actually applying this overlay district? And gave her a couple of ideas that you, you know, seems like a lot of what most communities, why they have these districts. A lot of commonalities, but again, wondering what are the, you know, new developments that we've had along these corridors? What are areas of concern that you would have liked to had more tools to address? Or, you know, older existing, you know, strip, your, um, centers or things like that? When we see redevelopment, what would we like to see it look like in the future?
Well, I guess I don't see it as being requirement for one and two family kind of places. I, I think that can come off the board. Um, my opinion. I understand that you sort of created the corridor based on property lines and lots budding the roads coming into the downtown. That was sort of the, I think, what you maybe set up as a parameter. Is there, is there any lot lines can change though? So my question is, would it be, um, would there be a way to say that if you have a lot that is within, um, 100 feet of the right of way of these three streets, for instance, um, that you would fall under these guidelines? That way lots can change on the backside if somebody wanted to, but you are, and I'm picking an arbitrary number. But that way you are, um, if you have a lot that is in that corridor, you have to fall underneath these guidelines. Does that make sense? Am I making sense on that?
So if a parcel was subdivided and now there's, maybe there was really deep parcel that was on North Main Street. Now it's subdivided. So there's something like, for example, the, the Dean Health Clinic. There's also a lot behind it. So, but I'm not sure that the health clinic lot is 150 feet deep. So would we say that if they did development kind of on that grassy field behind that, would we also want to apply?
Well, that would depend. We'd have to, we'd have to pick a number. Um, and yes, they could subdivide. If, if the number's 150, they could make that lot 151 feet deep and that lot in the back isn't required. But they also have no street frontage. So, you know, your zoning codes are zoning, your, our zoning code says that you have to have certain street frontages. So that lot couldn't be created because there is no frontage to the street.
Frontage on like Market Street, for example, instead.
I think that's an example, you know, if you start looking at all these different, all these lots are different. I, I, I find no appetite for trying to say you have to have 80% of your front, you know, you're, you're constraining a difficult situation already. Every lot's different, the drainage is different, all these things. If you start telling somebody you have to fill 80% of the front of the lot out to the street and that's where the water wants to drain, you just created a, an engineering marvel, you know, to happen to, you know, to achieve that. So I, I don't have any appetite for that, that sort of tinkering with the development process. We, we want to encourage people to redevelop some of these areas and upgrade these buildings. And if we make it more difficult to do that, we're not going to get it. You know, same with telling them they all have to have the same kind of lighting or signage or whatever, you know.
Della Field creeps me out.
You know, we have lighting standards, we have, you know, a very modern sign code. Uh, you know, I don't think we need to go a step further. I'm not looking to rubber stamp things all the way down Main Street or Janesville Street so that everything looks like a, you know, a toy village or something like that. That doesn't, you know, that doesn't intrigue me at all. You know, I, I look at, you know, a, a new Culvers and, you know, new QuickTrip and the car wash and, you know, the quality of the redevelopment we've gotten in those areas has a vast improvement to what we had. They're still allowing, you know, those franchises to have their own identity, but we encourage them to bring their best architecture with them and their best materials, and they did. And, and we didn't have, you know, 10 extra or 20 or 30 extra pages of zoning text to get them to do that. I think our, you know, a lot of what we have in our zoning code already helped encourage that. And, you know, they're coming into us for a, you know, a conceptual review. We encouraged more of that and we got it. So I don't know how much, how much more we have to try to put it in writing and then further constrain people. And, you know, they decide not to redevelop because it's just too difficult.
I think the intention of this is if we're not here, you know, um, the next group that takes our place, um, we have the intention and we have followed through with Culvers and with whatever project to sort of hold them to a higher standard that sometimes is a beyond what our zoning code is. And I, what I don't want to have happen is, you know, tomorrow we all fall over and we get a new group in here and we don't have that memory of, of intentions and expectations that's carried through. So I just want to, um, I just want to set something up for success. And, and the intention of creating these corridors was, yes, we've got a good zoning code. Yes, we have done the right things to position Oregon for growth and for whatever. But in these three areas, we want to really say, this is, um, this is what, who we are. We offer a little bit more flexibilities, maybe on the backside. But on these three corridors, as a guest, as a person coming to our village and as a way to puff up our chest as we drive through when we live here, this is, this is a pretty okay place. Um, so I, I think that, uh, that was what I'm looking for is how do we, what, how, first of all, how do we define that? What is that? And then how do we put it into words so that it can be carried through? I don't have the answer. That's what I need some handholding for. Um, I don't think it's Della Field. Um, having, having me, uh, having just done the, uh, building in the Middleton plan that, uh, you mentioned, it's not so strong either. Um, I think that the Fitchburg plan is a little too far, like I think there's too much. Yeah. Um, you end up just getting little boxes on the hillside kind of thing. Everything's going to look the same with different materials. And you do. Um, so I don't know what the answer is, but that's what I, that's my thought process. Anybody else?
Yeah, I'm, I'm challenged by it because I would, I'd like to see our corridors have an identity. Uh, and how do you get to that? You don't get to it by saying, well, whatever anybody wants to do, you have to set a vision. And to me, design standards set that vision. I, I hear what you're saying in terms of, you know, dictating, hey, all buildings need to be up against the street. Well, it may not make sense on a certain site. So you have to have that flexibility. I see this as a start to creating an identity. So the corridors have an identity, uh, some signage that reflects the community, uh, that sets the mood as you transition from entry to our downtown center. The, the big challenge is how do you do it without undue burden? And we've already talked about the residential area. I can't see putting that burden on homeowners. But I think you need to cite the corridor. You need to define the corridor. So you can't just say, we're not going to draw the map around the residential area. What you do is you say, we're not going to apply specific standards. Um, but you do define the corridor. Um, I would like to see businesses not showcase their parking lot and showcase the facade of the building and put the parking behind like Verona has done i- in their development. So I do think we need to have some standards to articulate that vision or moving towards it.
I think one, you know, Oregon's kind of, especially in recent years, maybe struggled with its identity more as we become less of a, I'll just say it, less of a horse capital, maybe more of something else. Um, and, but we're still distinct and unique and we're not contiguous to, you know, the growth of Madison, everything. Uh, as I look at these corridors, I think about everything that's kind of out, you know, outside the village boundary. And then what you kind of see as you enter the village and then moving towards our downtown intersection, sort of moving from rural to more suburban to historic kind of urban core and historic neighborhoods. I mean, Janesville, Jefferson and North Main Street. We have wonderful, you know, different styles of architecture and a lot of really nicely maintained historic homes. And of course our downtown historic core, I think that's why a lot of people are attracted to Oregon, at least that I talked to. They think it's unique that we've maintained a lot of those buildings. And, um, while we have a small downtown, it's very active. There's very few vacancies, things like that too. So, while we might not necessarily have a style like nuclearist, you know, you think, okay, everything looks like you're in Switzerland. Maybe we're not, or again, Stoughton, you know, we're not trying to be, we don't have a one ethnicity that's sort of, I mean, driving a lot of architecture, but is there a story to tell of like moving from natural areas to more historic downtown core? Or kind of moving back in time as you're moving to the center, just throwing out ideas. But I, I get what you're all saying. I kind of agree with all of you in that I think we should be proud of what we've done. I think we've been lucky that we have a lot of consistency with planning commission. You guys have a lot of expertise and you've seen a lot of these projects fail and also succeed. And so, um, you know, developers are looking for your feedback. They want to have your support. And a lot of them have gone above and beyond the call of duty to make things nicer than they were maybe required to. But you're right, five, 10, 15, 20 years, we don't know who all is going to be in this room making decisions. And whether it's through corridor overlay or zoning code itself, everything can be changed, right? We, we're talking about zoning text amendments. So things can change over time. But I do see the value of having some kind of template or at least some vision that we flesh out. And, and, you know, maybe some of these other text amendments too, if we feel like those are ready to go, we could also separate this from those and have this be a little bit of a longer discussion. We have other kind of policy, uh, related text amendments that we need to spend time digging into too. So not to kick the can down the road, but I think if we do this, I think we all want to do it right and give it the time it needs. But other things like chickens and bees, we know, we're getting people call every day, wondering when we're going to get that up and running too. So I don't want to delay some of those low hanging fruit items too. Um, but I don't want to rush this process either. So kind of where I'm at.
I think it has to do with building placement, um, landscape, lighting, and, um, a general concept of materials. I don't want to say that it has to look a certain way because as soon as you start to tell or dictate a style, I think that bad things can happen. It either ends, turns into a Della Field or it turns into a Disney development or it turns into a cartoon. Um, and I think that it just needs to have the flexibility for it to look like the eighties, the nineties, the two thousands, the two thousand teens. And that's sort of okay. For me. I don't know. As long as that, the, the conceptual format is there, what the aesthetic looks like, what the lipstick looks like, isn't as important.
What I've, uh, seen over the years that I've been, been in, you know, Oregon is that for a long time, we wondered what we're, what, uh, was our theme and, uh, the early people, even before my time, some of the people that were active decided that this was the horse capital of Wisconsin without even counting horses and where they were. A real good promoters of especially the American saddlebred, uh, people and owners and, and Berry Stables and a lot of the people that they worked with. So that community members built that theme, but we ran, came through a time where we kind of stalled out on, on whether that was really where we wanted to, to go. And that's been, been talked about for many years at the chamber level. What, what theme do you want to? What do you want Oregon to be known for? And it, it seems to me like it came, came down to, after all those years and a lot of worrying about that, that Oregon is just a good community to raise a family. to raise a family. We've got things going on here. There's supportive of families, good education and all those things do have a bit of a price tag to them too. And that is a struggle I see we have now. Trying to build affordable housing for people that, uh, that, so they can live here and afford to be here, but there's, uh, their demand, they're looking at this as a good place to cut, everybody that's looking here sees it as a good community to be in for a lot of reasons. Uh, so you kind of have to blend that, all that thought and, and work off the things that Oregon has been involved with. That you start seeing in our hearts and, and simple things like the Tin Man. It was a, a kind of thought to be a nice or for a long time turns into be one of your, your central things. And that you start designing artwork after. And so I, I like, uh, flexibility. I think that, uh, uh, having standards on and, and making, uh, various, various components that you need to have, uh, that find details on, that you do need, to have that, some of that in writing with, uh, we've had a lot of good design that's come up, I think, just from, uh, creativity on the part of, of, uh, not only developers, but I, I think the plan commission has really, really pushed that in, in recent years. I know early on in, uh, in my experience was that the plan, the planning really was, uh, was not very involved and not very, uh, wasn't funded and we didn't have, uh, good consultants to work with. And then when that changed, as we came on with the village executive and, and, uh, and had, uh, more, uh, more involvement. It was more costly to have all those things, but it's a hard, it's a hard thing to meet that. But I think having some flexibility and letting people, uh, use, use the resources that are, that are here and, and that, uh, and people who want to do development, uh, are held a standard of, of doing quality things that, that, uh, that, I think that's important. And, and I hear that, that we've done a lot of, we've done a lot of that and it's been good. So, and I, I think, uh, the last thing that I would say is we always have to have our eye on where's the water going in this town and we gotta make that, make things work and, and look good and still be an appealing place to be.
So the, the bottom line is we have to start somewhere. We have no money to work with, right? Uh, but I think there are little things we can do. So first step, map the corridors. Uh, second step, I think signage is critical, uh, and can be a unifying element, right? And so the biggest theme ironically, I think in this village is the water tower because we have water tow, water issues. Right? Kind of ironic. Um, but setting the expectations for developers and setting the, mood for people that live here can be s- simple steps, right? I could see this, uh, unifying signage coming into the corridors, maybe an emblem of the, of the water tower. Um, and then as we go down the road, hopefully we can get more specific on those standards. But I don't think we should, um, not do this because we don't, we can't articulate those standards holistically at this point.
Do you have any thoughts on that?
We had some really good comments here and, and if, like Patrick said, we have to get, start somewhere. And, and, and do you have enough information at this point to proceed in any way? Or, or maybe give us some more guidance that we can start narrowing down what we're doing.
I think I'm hearing the direction that you wanna go. I'll just attempt to summarize that and make sure that I got it correct. You care about, um, in encouraging quality development. Concerns about going too far to, um, the point of cost concerns and affordability and, um, standards that are too high to get the projects done that you want. You probably are not interested in a specific theme. We don't have to go to that level of detail. Color, exact materials aren't things that you wanna see in this right now. But just again, getting to quality. Um, in terms of the regulatory framework, it sounds like, um, a little bit of a blend. Maybe starting with just a few key design standards. And I tried to highlight those as you, as you mentioned them, um, maybe building placement, materials, lighting, landscaping and signage. Um, the building placement will be interesting. I'm not sure if there's consensus about around that right now. Um, if there should be a strict requirement for all parking and vehicle circulation areas to be behind the building or not. Like you mentioned, some of your newer redevelopments, um, would not comply with that if you had adopted it before those came in. So that might be something to clarify now or as we go through this, um, I can also put some thought into how the code could provide options and flexibility. I think building materials would be fairly straightforward to identify higher class materials and ask for those without getting too prescriptive, rigid or thematic. Same with, I think, lighting and landscaping. I did wanna ask about the signage. Were you referring to maybe like community entryway signage or signage standards for business wall?
Community entry. We have a good sign code. The challenge is enforcing it. There's violations all over the place, but, and I understand the difficulty with trying to enforce it.
Is there anything that I missed or got incorrect in that summary?
Have a clarifying question. One topic, topics that come up, I feel like a lot on these recent projects, especially ones on, we were just talking about like All Stars, is building massing and kind of the breaking up facade. I think that's a common point of feedback that you all give to developers at the early stage. And then we kind of see them massage that from there. So I wonder if there's some language that we could put in kind of from the get go. So they sort of know what, what is too big or, you know, what do we mean? Maybe some visual examples of breaking up building massier materials. And then the other thing is step backs. Um, thinking about like the proposal that was, um, the four story one on Janesville Street that we kind of saw, um, come and go last fall, but, um, transitioning, um, between various, you know, uses, having that single family next door, but really feeling like, um, you know, stepping back from three to four stories. And, um, I'm not sure if there's like a height, you know, if you're above three stories, if you're doing anything taller, that needs to be stepped back at least X feet. Or, um, and if there's a different way to describe that too. There's also, of course, the downtown master plan that we're about to embark on. And I think we anticipate some design guidelines to come out of that too. And maybe that's more about the downtown area versus the whole corridor. But, um, it'll be interesting to kind of see how, how many of those same topics come up for just downtown as well. So I don't know, what do you, how do you feel about the massing and the step back?
My immediate reaction is examples, sh- show where it's been done well. And I think a prime example right now is the apartment building on Main Street that's being built, where he's done a great job material wise, uh, and breaking up the massing. So pick out from our community, not necessarily the bad examples, but the good examples as something to strive towards.
Can you put down the Fibonacci sequence? It's just simple, um, um, you know, rhythms. You know, it's just this, the, uh, the scales of things and, um, um, you don't make things that are seven times taller than their width. That's uncomfortable. But you can make things that are two thing, two units wide and three units tall. That's a nice scale. That's sort of that, that whole proportion and scale thing. Um, and to Patrick's point, I think that's what makes some of these projects successful is that whether the designers know it or not, they're creating comfortable proportions.
Classic order of architecture. I mean, comes from the Romans and the Greeks, actually mapped this stuff out and, and they have age old books showing all these proportions in them and we've kind of lost those, but they do work.
I'm telling you, man.
Yeah, maybe this step back comment too can kind of go along with just more of that pedestrian or human scale design if we're encouraging buildings that are a little bit closer to the, the street. They feel a little bit more comfortable as you're a pedestrian walking by and not so kind of imposing to.
And Elise, I like your idea of, yeah, we're, we're fine with, uh, pushing buildings up to a street, um, but they can only be three stories tall. And then they gotta be set back by, you know, pick a number, 12 feet? I don't know. Whatever it is, um, to help break up that scale. Again, the massing, the proportions, all those kinds of things.
I don't know. Can we say that we wanna, you know, see, you know, massing, giving, giving, uh, consideration to proportions and things like that without saying you have to step it back 12 feet? I mean, that, it's an arbitrary number, but it might not be a number that achieves the, the real goal or it might be too much, it might not be enough. You know, I don't know if there's a way to lead, lead it without being too specific because every site is different, every building is different. I hate to say that all cars have to go to the rear. Well, what if the neighboring property, the rear, you know, would be sensitive to those cars and those headlights and stuff? So, you know, the quick trip on Main Street, having the, everything to the front towards the highway was a lot better than having all the new apartments. Existing apartments to the back have all the car lights and traffic and stuff, you know, closer to them. It made more sense to keep it in the front in that case, I feel. So, you know, if we start putting these demands in there, we're really not, not gonna use each site to its best ability and its highest use.
Well, could it be as simple as language, like the, the village generally prefers these?
Encouraged, discouraged, kind of like the minimal example.
Yeah, yeah. There can be a few quantitative standards where it makes a lot of sense and you want to be very clear. And then the others can be considered vertical and horizontal rhythms and, um, that would give you at least something to point to while you're reviewing things. And a consistent sort of menu of options.
Heights of buildings have to, you know, give consideration to the, the heights of the neighboring buildings and, you know, distance away from the neighboring buildings. Things like that. If you're 400 feet away, four stories next to two isn't a big deal. But if you're 25 feet away, it's a big deal to one of the people.
Okay, I did wanna ask one more question about the map. Um, in the language that's already in your code, it describes four corridors. So Main, Main Street, Jefferson, Janesville, and then it actually also references US Highway 14. And it's not something that we talked about specifically. I mean, that really just backs up to, um, parcels along the highway. So one option is to strike that language, um, or discuss further.
I don't think 14 is.
There is, there's nothing we're gonna be able to do.
The only significant thing we show out there is the stadium and everything else is kind of landscaped away and, you know, they don't wanna be seen or oversee the corridor.
I, I agree, but just one comment towards that. Many years ago, this is going back to late nineties, early two thousands, we had a consultant come in. And the, the consultant's comment was the first thing I see when I get off of 14 is a sign for prison. And so the point was think about what, what's your community is reflecting. So while I agree that we can't necessarily map that corridor or shouldn't map that corridor, I think we need to be conscientious about somebody coming into our town for the first time, what they see. And, and we all ignore it because we've come in so many times. And so having that, that fresh, fresh. It was interesting that comment she made.
I think I have what I need to start somewhere.
Okay, yeah, I, I know it's been a, but yeah, hopefully you got something out of this.
I think the other part of that question was, should this take a little longer and we separate this? And they go ahead with the other zoning amendments or should we hold up the wagon and keep it all together?
I think that's what you were suggesting, right, Elise, is to keep working on this and let the other stuff kind of go through? Cause it seems that nobody's made a comment.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's nothing to say we can't do multiple, you know, we can do as many text amendments as we want to. I think grouping them together when convenient is great, just because it's less public hearings and things like that. But I think the other ones are probably more in a ready to be in ordinance format. I mean, we could do that as soon as the June or July meeting. Um, this one again, there's a lot of examples. There might be other, you know, images or reference projects that we wanna include. So, um, I guess that's what I would be in favor of is keeping the other, the other, um, text amendments moving forward. But continuing to work on this, not, you know, holding on that, but, um, bringing drafts in front of you through the summer. Then hopefully maybe August, September, we're ready to go with this language.
All right.
Is that okay?
Thank you. All right, we'll move on, huh? Director of Community Development reports.
Stuff's happening. So, um, J C Park Phase Two is underway. Probably seen all the dirt and trees and everything else. Probably need to plug this back in, don't I? Um, thanks, Sonia. Um, so we do have a ribbon cutting. I did not put that date on here, but ribbon cutting for J C Community Park as well as the Kids Get Fit event is gonna be Saturday, May 18th. Um, from nine to noon, the ribbon cutting's at nine thirty. There'll be free food and remarks and, uh, a lot of activities for families. So, uh, that's going on. A lot of our development projects are, you know, underway. Post office obviously is, is rolling. Um, still, I think what I've heard is Late Fall, North Point, obviously in Oregon Parks under construction. Also heard Late Fall, probably November-ish for that as well. Um, I haven't, I know the Redezi project, um, again, he has closed on both of those properties, but haven't heard anything in terms of coming forward for the S I P or annexation. So there's some traffic study work with the county going on right now. So I think that's kind of where that one is on hold at the moment. And, um, I think that's the majority of the projects. And then just wanted to let you know, we did kick off the, um, the downtown master plan with sta, our consultants from redevelopment resources on Monday. So they're working on a community engagement, um, plan and kind of schedule, trying to hit a lot of our community events that are happening over the summer. So we'll bring that to the June Planning Commission meeting, um, for you guys to take a look at and the board as well. And hopefully we can kind of hit the ground running with hitting the art fair and outdoor movie nights and concerts and things like that that are coming up right away. Also, we'll be at the May 20th, um, Village Board meeting with an update on the senior center, um, all the community engagement. So the input sessions that happened in person, mostly in February and March. And then the community gymnasium survey, I don't know if you guys had a chance to take that. We got nearly 900 responses. But that was an online, largely an online survey, but we distributed through the school district, um, emails to families as well. So I got a really great response from that. And overall, not a lot of surprises, but, um, a, a lot of support and interest in using, um, the gymnasium, walking track and the senior center for those, um, that are interested in that space too. So if you wanna hear that report or just take, take a look at the report in the packet, that'll be on the May 20th meeting as well. And we'll have our owner's reps from Try North there. Uh, and then, yep, our upcoming dates, June 6th and then July 11th. Just wanted to remind you guys, since the Fourth of July is a Thursday, we'll be meeting the Thursday after that.
Okay, thank you. Any reason to go over anything on the planning staff since it's already occurred?
Nope, I think those are all, um, projects that you've seen now. I do think, um, our June meeting, we should have a concept, um, planned for the commercial site on the Jim Lee's Corner, North Main Street in Netherwood. So, they, I've seen a couple of drafts and they just weren't quite ready to, to share this meeting. So, hopefully in June, you'll see that in your packet.
Good. Okay. I think the, again, I think that, that the coming May, I, I, how you guys feel, but I think that apartment building on the north side is turning out very nice. I think we should thank Mr. Coyle for doing such a nice job. I think it does look really, really nice. And one person asked, why in the world would you build one between a cemetery and Quick Trip?
Quiet neighbors to the north. Yeah, I think it's, yeah, going well and, um, yeah.
Tours there at night. It's interesting walking through there.
Yeah, yeah.
It is. It really is.
Getting a lot of calls about that space. I think people are eager to move in and I think I've heard kind of late summer should be ready to, ready to go.
Looks like they're moving right along.
Do you know when they're going to address the speed bump on?
I heard a couple, I heard a couple of people.
That's why I didn't bring it up.
Yeah, I heard a couple of people got some air on that, uh, bump there. So, I drove through it today for the first time. So, yeah, I think there was some patching done. I don't have an update on that. I think that's a utility.
Responsibility for it though, I assume, right? I mean, the village will hold them responsible.
I'm sure.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure of the whole story of how that came to be, but.
It settles.
Yeah.
It settles.
Yes, definitely.
Excuse me, they didn't compact the property.
Yeah, we can ask.
All right. Anybody else have anything to go over? Let's have a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries me to adjourn. Thank you, everybody.